Good evening. Today is Tuesday, January twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-one, and this is the start of the Hanson Board of Selectmen meeting. In accordance with Governor Baker's recent order reducing the number of individuals allowed to congregate at any time to ten due to the spike in COVID-nineteen cases, this evening's meeting is being held remotely, with responsible, reasonable access being afforded via live streaming courtesy of Whitman Hanson Cable Access Television. Would you please stand with me for the presidencies? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We're, I'm looking for a motion to go into executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargain session or contract negotiations with non-union personnel to whip Fire Chief Jerome Thompson pursuant to Mass General Law C thirty-eight twenty-one A two. We will, we will reconvene in open session at six o'clock.
Some of.
Second.
Roll call vote. Ms. Kim. Mr. Boss.
Aye.
Mr. Dyke.
Aye.
Mr. Hickey.
Aye.
And I'm an aye. We are now in executive session. Okay, welcome back to our meeting. There's, under the agenda, um, there's items reasonably known by the chairman within forty-eight hours prior to the meeting, and that is, we were just in executive session discussing Chief Thompson's, um, contract. And the board, um, is gonna vote on Mr. Thompson's contract. The Board of Selectmen is proud to announce the signing of a new three-year agreement with Fire Chief Jerome Thompson, Jr. The agreement runs from July first, two thousand and twenty, to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. The board would like to thank the chief for the past president and future service to the town, and we would like to wish him well now and in the future. So I'm looking for a motion to vote on Chief Thompson's contract.
Some of.
Some of. Second.
This is made and seconded by Mr. Hickey. Roll call vote. Mr. Dyke.
Aye.
Mr. Hickey.
Aye.
Mr. Boss.
Aye.
Mrs. Kim.
Aye.
And I'm an aye. So that's five oh grid. Mrs. Kim, would you mind doing the announcements for us, please?
It would be my pleasure. Uh, nomination papers for the May fifteenth Town of Hanson annual election are now available at the Hanson Town Clerk's Office. Nomination papers can be obtained by contacting the Hanson Town Clerk's Office at seven eight one two nine three two seven seven two and making an appointment. The treasurer-collector for the Town of Hanson wishes to inform residents that the third and fourth quarter real estate and personal property tax bills for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one were mailed on December thirtieth, two thousand and twenty, and will be due on February first, two thousand and twenty-one, and May third, two thousand and twenty-one. We urge any taxpayer who has not received a bill to contact our office at seven eight one two nine three two four two two. Thank you. Green Hanson will be holding two listening sessions for Hanson residents to learn about the community choice aggregation. Each session will take place on Zoom and will begin with an overview of the process, followed by a chance to ask questions or to raise any concerns about community choice aggregation. The first listening session will take place on Thursday, January twenty-eighth, and the second will be on Thursday, February eleventh. Both will begin at seven P M. and last about one hour. For more information, call Mary Ann DiMascio of Green Hanson at six zero three three four zero one three five two. The Hanson Police Department will host a blood drive at the station, seven seven five Main Street, on Friday, January twenty-ninth, from eleven A M. to five thirty P M., and on Saturday, January thirtieth, from eight A M. to two thirty P M. To make an appointment on Friday, log on to tinyurl.com backslash Hanson P O L Jan twenty-nine, and for Saturday, log on to tinyurl.com backslash Hanson P O L January thirtieth. For questions, please call six one seven six three two three two zero six. Volunteers are needed on the following committees: Facebook Upkeep Committee, Conservation Committee, associate, uh, associate members, Cultural Council, Disabilities, Economic Development, Highway Building Committee, Historic Commission, Memorial Day Patriotic Observance, Memorial Field Trustees, and North River Commission. Applications for appointments and info on the committee are available on the town website at www.hanson-ma.gov. And last but not least, upcoming meetings, Board of Selectmen, February second, two thousand and twenty-one, at six P M., Board of Selectmen, February ninth, two thousand and twenty-one, at six P M.
Great, thank you. Okay, under new business first, we're gonna do fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one second quarter budget update with town accountant Todd Hassett. Todd, how are you, sir?
Fine, thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening.
And if you, Todd, if you wouldn't mind, would you, do you mind doing the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one second quarter, and then we'll go to the twenty-two budget?
Sure.
Okay, great, thank you.
Um, and, and I know, uh, the focus of this evening, my role is more around next year's budget, so I'll, I'll be brief with respect to this year, but just wanted to, to update the board as to how the town's, uh, budget is performing um, through the second quarter or halfway through the fiscal year. And in your handout, you have a, a four-page document, uh, one page for each of our appropriation funds. Our general fund being the main operating fund of the town where most of our depart- departmental budgets are contained and and, uh, that's where our, our property tax revenue comes in and, and supports the various public services we have. Um, to date, um, most of our revenues are tracking well. The, um, excise tax, as you know, uh, on, on paper, it looks low. We've only collected thirteen percent of the budget. But I would remind the board that, um, this particular, um, tax is uh, levied more on a calendar year basis than a fiscal year basis. And we are, um, uh, we've just, um, sent out the first commitment for F Y twenty-one. And it's, it's come in about forty thousand dollars less than, or maybe thirty-five thousand less than the same billing a year ago. Uh, so this was one of the indicators we were concerned about going into next year's budget. You know, how, how were car sales doing? Because the, um, excise tax, that, um, data that we get from the state has a very aggressive depreciation schedule, so if folks choose to hold on to their vehicles for an extra year or two, um, as, as they probably know, their excise bill goes down quite a bit and and therefore the overall total revenue for a particular community may, uh, fluctuate and, um, uh, even though, um, we've been in a pandemic, um, you know, I think car prices have been, um, somewhat attractive. There's been a lot of activity from what we've read. Uh, but what we're seeing in, in Hanson is a modest decrease in that first major billing um, as compared to a year ago. With respect to our permits, um, and departmental fees, those are, are maintaining, uh, strong levels to date. Um, the only area that's, um, performing fairly well, but, but definitely starting to show is in, investment earnings are down, and that's a function of the fact that interest rates are lower than they were a year ago at this time. Uh, the flip side of that certainly is if, if a city or town is in a position to, uh, need to borrow for major capital improvements, this is a terrific time to borrow funds. Interest rates or tax-exempt municipal bonds are near historic lows right now. So, um, on the expense side of the general fund, I'd just point out a couple of things to the board. I think I mentioned the last time we, when we went through the first quarter that I had some preliminary concerns about the fire department, uh, overtime coverage due to some anticipated leaves. Um, we've, we have some injury leaves, we have a military leave. Um, and the, um, coverage to keep staffing at a, at a four-man, um, level, uh, has, um, is starting to show in these last few weeks, um, in terms of the overtime costs tracking at a higher amount than, um, than our budget can support, so um, we anticipate we may need a supplemental appropriation, um, for this account. And at some point, the board may need to, um, work with the chief on, appropriate staffing levels for service to the community. It's, it's, uh, this is sort of unprecedented, um, for us, given, uh, the amount of coverage that, uh, we need right now, and, and, um, we'll continue to keep the board updated on that. Other than that, most of the departmental budgets are doing well. Um, the highway budget, at such time as we hire a new director, superintendent, um, we may need, um, a modest supplement in that area as well. Otherwise, um, nothing of major concern. Uh, the general fund is performing overall um, as expect, expected, and as you can see, we're tracking at similar rates as compared to the same point a year ago at this time. The water fund, the next page in your handout, um, we have, our first quarterly billing is, is, um, dated February first and will be, will mailed to ratepayers. Uh, I've been told the, the automated billing process has, with the new meter system is going extremely well. Um, the entire town can be read in less than a day, um, due to this new technology. And so ratepayers will be seeing their first quarterly bill shortly. Uh, and then the, the next quarterly bill, I believe, will be out around the first of May. Most salary and expense areas are tracking well, um, for the water department. As you know, this year, the debt service, um, went up a bit. We did a bond, a number of infrastructure improvements, uh, tanks, the meter program, uh, water main replacements. Um, and as we look to the future with this operation, they do have some, uh, major capital uh, plans, uh, that the town will need to consider over the next couple of years, which will have a further impact, or future impact on, on rates. Uh, third page, the recreation, uh, Camp Kowani, uh, Enterprise Fund. This is a tough year for most park and recreation programs across the Commonwealth due to the pandemic and the closing. And it's really more of a revenue issue, um, due to events, um, and functions being deferred or, um, canceled. Um, they do have a, a fairly strong spring, um, booked at this point, and we'll, we'll sort of see how that plays out. As we look ahead to next year, the bookings are, are not what they were, uh, that, uh, they enjoyed just a couple of years ago. Uh, they have moderated, um, and as you know, we did have to subsidize this program. Uh, the general fund had to contribute, uh, to help them get through this year. We did have town meeting vote an eighty-seven thousand dollar subsidy um, in addition to, um, but a hundred and five thousand dollar contribution for capital improvements uh, to do with the facility and the grounds. So going forward, this, this is certainly an area of, uh, you know, just getting through this year is of concern because the revenues not necessarily going to be there. Uh, they've been very prudent about their spending to date. And we'll, we'll continue to monitor this area very closely. The, um, last page, uh, relates to the transfer station, the solid waste, uh, program. To date, the revenues appear to be a little off, as you can see. But the revenues do tend to lag a bit, so, um, it, it's, I'm not raising a flag of concern at this point. The, the, um, I can tell you that, uh, since the end of December, we've seen a couple of strong, um, months of data, and the funds are coming in after December thirty-first, um, for, um, some of the user fees. The, um, expense side, um, as you know, we, we're expecting increases in hauling costs. Um, the town meeting did, um, appropriate in the fall fifty-five thousand um, from the general fund to, um, contribute to purchasing new compactors, so we won't have a recurring rental, uh, expense going forward for that for a number of years. And annually, we do subsidize this program. Um, this year, it was a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollar contribution from the general fund to, um, balance the budget, if you will. Uh, the, the rest, um, coming from, uh, just under two hundred thousand from, uh, user charges and fees at the transfer station. Um, again, this, this program continues to have pressure on the, um, expense side to do increased hauling costs. And, um, you know, we'll continue to keep the board monitored, um, updated on, on how that goes. Uh, the last page in your, uh, this particular handout is just a, a listing of the status as of December thirty-first of the various, um, special articles by department, uh, that are still open or, or being utilized. And, um, about half of the, just a little less than half of the balance, um, relates to, uh, projects for the, um, regional school district. Uh, many of the, and you'll notice, nothing appears to have been expended to date. Um, I have been in touch with the region and, and the way these particular articles work is the region does the work and expends it and then submits a, a reimbursement package to the town, uh, typically twice a year, and um, they are in the process of putting together a reimbursement. Um, so many of these, um, projects have been underway, even though on paper, it appears there's been no activity. And, I think with that, unless John has anything to add, um, I'd be happy to move on to the um, F Y twenty-two budget, or, or certainly take any questions the board may have.
Yeah, John. I know, I'd just like to add, thank you very much, Todd, for a very thorough report, and, uh, um, just maybe the board has any questions, and if they, they don't, we guess we could move on.
Any questions? No, good, Todd.
Okay. Thank you. So, um, the board, I believe, has received a, a binder or a, a package with the preliminary F Y twenty-two budget data. And John's done a terrific job putting this together. You'll notice it's packaged a little differently than, um, what you may have seen in prior years. However, the, this model that, that John's put forth to the board is more in conformance with how we move forward into, into town meeting, into the, the budget article that we present to the town. Um, tonight, um, I thought I'd just speak to the board at a high level of sort of our preliminary, um, look at where things are. As you know, the town bylaw requires the administration to present to the board by the end of January, a, a budget, and, and we're here to, uh, stay in compliance tonight with the town bylaw, knowing that many things are still, um, in play. There are a lot of moving parts. There are uh, several data points that are not firmed up yet. For example, this, the state budget, um, which the bud, the governor may be discussing, uh, this evening, which is typically issued in late January. Um, so what I thought I would do is there are two, um, in your, uh, binder, and John may have to help me as to where they are, but there are two single-page sort of overview summary documents. Uh, one is entitled Town of Hanson General Fund Budgeted Revenues and Expenditures, Departmental Sumaries. And then the other one, um, that you're familiar with is, is, um, a document that I've prepared for the board in prior years entitled Sources and Uses of Funds, which shows you not only where we're, we're initially starting for F Y twenty-two, but how the prior, uh, four or five fiscal years budgets, uh, were balanced in terms of revenues and sources of funds versus expenditures and uses of funds. And so, um, to give you a sort of a high-level look at, at where we're at, we've gone through and calculated the maximum allowable levy limit uh, without an override. Um, and, um, we're allowed, as you know, under mass law to, to increase, um, the prior levy limit by a two and a half percent. Uh, for Hanson, that represents about five hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. Uh, we also are allowed to, to raise taxes for any new, new construction or, or new property or major improvements to properties in town, and that's referred to as new growth. At this point, uh, we do have a a new growth estimate that's about a hundred thousand or so higher than, than what we, um, had this current year. Um, so as you know, there's, there's, there's definitely more activity in, in the building area, um, which will start to yield some tax revenues for us going forward. So at this point, in addition to the two and a half percent, we're anticipating about, um, one, just over one point seven percent of, uh, tax, new tax revenue, uh, in addition to, to the two and a half, uh, to be available for town meeting to consider. We have a few, um, existing debt exclusions, uh, that the voters have agreed to pay additional taxes to cover the annual debt service costs, uh, for, um, in, in specific to the town, it's the, um, police station construction, which we have a, a few years left. That will be maturing in F Y twenty-six. That's just over three hundred thousand a year of additional taxes that will be coming off, maturing after F Y twenty-six. In addition, uh, there's regional school, uh, regional high school debt service that the voters a number of years ago uh, agreed to pay additional taxes for in both communities, Whitman and Hanson, and, uh, that's about, um, two hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars, uh, that F Y twenty-two cost. And those, um, that debt, uh, will mature in F Y twenty-eight. So both of these projects, in total, almost six hundred thousand of additional taxes will be, uh, rolling off in the next, uh, four to six years. So that gives us, uh, and I should, should, um, remind the board that, um, given the, the, um, the nature of our community, um, nearly eighty-three percent of our, our budget is supported through property taxes. And only about five and a half percent, uh, is derived from state revenues. At this time, we're, um, anticipating level-funded state revenues. As you know, we were fortunate this year, given that the state had about a twelve thousand dollar, excuse me, a twelve percent uh, reduction in state revenue. This, the legislature did hold local aid as best they could, uh, for F Y twenty-one. Um, so at this point, we're anticipating, um, anxiously what the governor has to say and, um, what his, uh, team is putting forth for, uh, local aid for F Y twenty-two. Uh, right now, our budget assumptions are, um, assuming a level funding of overall state aid. Uh, there has been some talk, and we'll know more shortly, but there's been some talk that um, certain major line items, um, will be level-funded plus some sort of, um, indexing for the cost of living. Um, and in our case, that would be unrestricted aid. And for the regional schools, it's chapter seventy education aid, which of course is very important to, um, the net cost to the member communities. Uh, the better state aid is, then the less, uh, local burden, if you will. Um, then we have about seven and a half percent of our, uh, budget is funded through local receipts. This is our motor vehicle excise that we talked about. Uh, permits, licenses, fees, investment earnings, and all, all the departmental revenue. And as I mentioned earlier, the, the major line item of our local receipts initially is, appears to be a bit down. Interest earnings are down. We'll see how the, um, cannabis ex, excise may, may roll out, um, in the next year or two, and that, that may, um, that's another, that's a new local receipt that we anticipate soon. So again, at this point, um, we're projecting a level-funded local receipts, um, with some lines down a bit and some lines up a bit. Uh, again, this will sort of true up over the next month or two, as, as we know more. But given what we've been through in the pandemic, you know, both state aid and local aid, um, are likely to be flat with maybe perhaps some modest increases. In addition, um, we utilize other funds to support certain parts of our budget. Um, the, in our case, um, we'll be proposing to use six hundred thousand dollars from the ambulance receipts fund to support the fire department. As I mentioned, talking about this year, there's an awful lot of, um, uh, shift coverage more than normal that we're experiencing. Uh, we're likely that we may need to supplement that this year from this, um, special fund. We, um, have upped the use of it, uh, for F Y twenty-two, uh, anticipating it will support some of that additional shift coverage that will continue into next fiscal year. We also have, um, over two hundred, I believe it's over two hundred thousand of, uh, about a hundred and fifty thousand of uh, septic loan, um, program funds that uh, we'll ask town meeting to transfer to support a portion of the town's debt service budget that relates specifically to, uh, septic, uh, improvements for homeowners. Um, so even though that's in the town's debt budget, it's fully funded through homeowner repayment of loans. And, um, as you know, this year, in order to balance the budget, we had to use, um, more free cash than we typically would to support the operating budget. It's generally not viewed as a good practice in the field, um, to utilize non-recurring sources for recurring expenses. Uh, we didn't have much choice, uh, this past year, as you know. Um, and initially, um, we're proposing that the board, uh, utilize two hundred and thirty-one thousand of free cash toward, toward next year's operating budget. And this is specifically related to taking on some new debt for the H V A C improvements at the Hanson Middle School. Um, if you recall, uh, this, um, project was approved via two town, previous town meeting votes, one in two thousand and eighteen, one in two thousand and nineteen. And the project has been completed. It did come in under budget. But at the time we, um, approved those projects, uh, we weren't aware of the shift in the um, opera, the operating assessment between the two communities, and we thought we had, at the time, we, we did have the capacity to take this debt on within the levy limit. Uh, but now, given the additional pressures that the town faces, uh, we're initially recommending that, uh, this debt service, um, be offset from free cash rather than from taxation. Uh, and again, it's just over two hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. This will, um, be paid off over a five or six-year period. Um, the, the whole project was about one point one million dollars. So that, that gives us a sort of, um, at, at the high level, just under twenty-eight at the high level, just under twenty eight million dollars of revenue, most of which is coming from property taxes and modest amounts from local and state revenues. As we look at the departmental budgets proposed for FY twenty two, we have all of our our contracts, I believe, are in place, which at least makes budget planning easier. We are faced with about a seven percent increase in public safety expenses due to, you know, some of these demands I mentioned for shift coverage and contractual obligations. The education budget is up in our worksheets over twelve and a half percent. I I will caution the board that we do not have formal budget requests from either Whitman, Hanson, regional or South Shore Vocational Technical. So we've put in placeholder amounts. So our placeholders may be too high, or they may be not enough, and and that's that could move things in in a big way upward favorable or unfavorable. And the the remainder of the departmental budgets, government, general government, human services, public works, culture and rec budgets are all up about four and a quarter percent, sort of consistent with our increase in property taxes. We're anticipating a two and a half percent increase in state charges and assessments. Again, that will flush out as the state budget goes along, but typically, it's it's not a major increase. It's typically does come in overall in that area. And that funds things like mosquito control, regional transit, the MBTA, and a number of other programs. The other thing that's adversely impacting us this year, in addition to the shift in education assessment costs, is employee benefits. The Plymouth County Retirement System had a new actuarial study prepared for the county retirement system. And all of the member units have experienced a fairly large increase in their assessment, starting next year. Our increase is eleven percent over the current year assessment. In addition, as you know, our employee benefits section covers group health insurance, which we're we're part of a collaborative purchasing, a joint purchasing group. Those rates have not been formalized yet. Those will hopefully play out in the next six weeks or so. So we should know more, and and we're hopeful that that particular area of the budget will possibly come down a little bit. Additionally, in the employee benefits, I just remind the board, we also have unemployment compensation. And typically, this isn't a topic of conversation for cities and towns. Unlike private employers, we're not required to make payment as a percentage of payroll as as the private sector does. So we only have unemployment costs when we have actual claims. So due to the pandemic, most cities and towns have experienced some unusual or or different level of unemployment claims. And we've had some modest claims as well beyond what we're used to. But I'm mainly pointing this out to the board because as we get to the bottom of the page and look at the shortfall that we're facing, as we deal with, you know, if that becomes that shortfall fall, or some of that becomes a reality, it's likely going to relate to staffing. And as staff are let go, it's, we can't simply assume if someone's laid off and they they're paid fifty thousand dollars, that it's a fifty thousand dollar savings to the town, because on the back end into the new year, there will be unemployment charges that we've got to make sure we keep an eye on. So it's, that's that's part of the the moving parts, if you will. In addition, outside of the the budget in the town meeting, the the Board of Assessors do establish a provision for anticipated statutory exemptions on property taxes and and abatements for challenges to valuations. Our board has has done a terrific job in in the office over the years, and we have a less than one percent of the levy is is just over two hundred thousand dollars is anticipated to be needed. And most of this relates to statutory exemptions. We have also what you see on John's summary, a line called transfers out. The majority of this relates to the support or the transfer station. And we're given the position we're in. As I said, this year, we did also subsidize the recreation Camp Kauani program. We're not in a position to do that necessarily going forward unless it's the pleasure of the board. So what you have before you tonight assumes some level of contribution toward the transfer station. But the camp would essentially be on their own like like they were in years prior to FY twenty one. And at this time, we're anticipating, with all that's said and done, we have a shortfall of just under two million dollars. And as I say, a number of things are not formalized or finalized yet. The the largest of which is what the education budget requests for FY twenty two are going to be for Hanson. I would also point out to the board that we have in your packet, this is just a minor point, but we have a summary of the capital requests. So so this overview was specific to the operating budget. Our capital budget requests are just over four million dollars for next year. If we pull out the water department, it's about three million for all of the other town departments, including the school capital requests. We do have a town bylaw that requires us to fund at least one percent of the budget toward capital. So in our case, that would be just under three hundred thousand dollars, which would certainly leave that three million quite a bit short. So we've got a lot of demand and a lot of pressure to utilize our resources. We have about one point two million or one point one million available in in free cash. As I say, we're we're looking to use some of it to meet our one percent capital obligation, some of it to pay for the middle school HVAC improvements. Some of it we may need to to get through this year. And there there are a lot of challenges and a lot of work ahead for us. But clearly, absent some level of tax relief via an override, we are looking at some significant reductions that will likely involve staff, may involve less programming at the camp. It might involve having to close the transfer station a bit more, reducing their schedule. It's it's likely that if there is no relief, that this is going to have a system wide impact on on most services and departments. And after all that good news, I'll I'll see if John or or anyone has any follow up.
John, would you like to add to that?
Yeah, it's a pretty dire at the at the moment, and I just, you know, this, these are, we do have assumptions. But even if the assumptions come out better than where we are, I mean, it's still a substantial amount that will be required in an override without a cut, without a serious cutting services. I mean, that's that's just where we are. I just, again, I'd like to thank Todd. Todd's done a fantastic job of putting this stuff together. And now we have our work ahead of us of trying to figure out how to get, you know, what we need to get done going forward.
Okay. Todd, did you have anything else to add?
Not at this time, but I'll look forward to working with the board over the next few months. As I say, it'll be challenging. As we'll keep the board apprised as as things develop, both favorably and unfavorably, and we'll hope to at least close the gap to some extent. I I'm I'm sorry to say, we we can't entirely close this gap. This is this is a pretty tough situation that that we face. And we'll we'll work together and do the best we can.
Okay. So basically, what you're saying is if we're not able to make up the shortfall, then there's no question that services would have to be cut in some way or another across the board and every department throughout the town.
I believe so. And and it's not only services, it it's going to mean staff. At this level of dollars, as you know, we're a very labor intensive service organization. And we can't escape some level of reductions in staffing, given what we face.
Right. Okay. All right. Does anybody have any questions for Todd? If not, I'm going to let him go. Okay.
Hi, Todd. That was a lot to unpack, as they say, but excellent job as usual. I wondering what, and if you covered this, I I apologize. But I'm wondering, what have we baked into our projections by way of the schools? What are we expecting additionally that they'll be asking us for in the projections that you're giving us?
Yeah, actually, John did a really nice worksheet. So if you don't mind, I'll I'll have John address that. But that, I didn't answer that specifically, but John does have something for you.
When I can grab it here, let's see, it's just on the on the two mile busing amounts of money that we use, there's a five percent placeholder placeholder in there for an increase. That goes from ninety eight thousand, I'm going to round the numbers off, ninety eight thousand three hundred to a hundred and three thousand. Again, we don't know what that amount will be. The schools haven't released that amount. We have a five percent placeholder on that. The the debt service is something that we've, that Todd did speak about, so that's not not that one. And we for twenty two, we assume the full statutory formula. The the agreement with Whitman said that we would, they would pay some of the, we have like a half, a year of maybe a five hundred thousand dollar payment from Whitman in fiscal year twenty one, and then fiscal year twenty two would be full statutory. So we're assuming a full statutory formula fiscal year twenty two, a four percent increase in the overall school budget with other assumptions baked in there, too. A zero percent increase in state aid like we, like Todd spoke about earlier. And we're also assuming that they do to use their excess and deficiency of under their equivalent of free cash that the regional school gets in order to subsidize some of the increase. And and then we assume that the split, the pupil split would say the same, which was which was fifty nine point nine six Whitman, forty point oh four percent Hanson. We don't have the official numbers yet on the current split for for this past October. I believe Todd can correct me, but I think it's October first is when the when the actual split is calculated by that date. So I we don't, we're going by last year's split because we don't know where this year's split is yet. So those are the assumptions that are baked in there. Again, they, we don't know until they release whether or not we're we're right or not.
And it, the preliminary October one enrollment suggests the allocation has dropped, Hanson's share has dropped slightly. So it may be just under four forty point oh four that John mentioned. And with respect to the regional vocational technical school, we're we've used a five percent placeholder.
Okay, so four percent increase. And John, are we tied in to what the negotiations are with the district and, you know, kind of keeping our ear to the ground on that? Just so that we know that they are being a true partner in a year that is going to be very difficult?
I have not been, I haven't heard anything yet about the negotiations. Lisa Green was our our representative in those meetings, and she's left Whitman's employment. So we're going to need someone, either myself or the or the new town administrator in Whitman to step forward and get involved in that. I'll be talking, this first day, I'm going to be meeting with him. And we could talk about that.
Okay, great. And I think that the district is having, I want to say it's next week, but I maybe Wednesday, I think they're 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 unveiling their budget. Just second question through you, Mr. Chair, to Todd and or John, whoever thinks they may have this information. When and what amount do we expect to be receiving from our marijuana grow facility?
I do not have that number. I I don't, I don't know. It would be a three percent on anything that's manufactured or grown or cultivated. So when that gets, when that gets rolling, then we'll be taking a percentage of whatever that is. We, you can't, and Todd can
Yeah, so, so
the revenue projections part of that.
In addition to that, to date, anyway, the Department of Revenue has told us that it, when it's first introduced, they're not willing to accept an estimate when you set your tax rate. They want to see actual numbers, at which point they're willing to approve that being added to the local receipts, which makes it really tricky the first year. So likely, you know, if if we know something by the fall, we could maybe perhaps, you know, use a little bit at the October town meeting, but I'm not sure how soon we might expect to see our first revenue.
Okay, that's helpful, but it's not going to be a magic bullet that's going to help us to avoid this override or any other fatalities that may
No, I don't believe so. I think that's, I think best case, it's an FY twenty three new local receipt and one thing that I I forgot to mention, Laura, during the budget overview was that we've been fortunate in the public safety area that this year and end next year, we've had the benefit of a state grant because we joined the regional dispatch district. And that's been, that's been a result of a four hundred thousand dollar a year savings for each of the, this year and next. And I would remind the board that that doesn't continue forever. That we'll start to wean off that. It's a multi-year grant. But starting in two years in FY twenty three, we'll have to reintroduce our share of the assessment for the regional dispatch. And that would be in time with or in in sync, if you will, with when perhaps we could use some cannabis revenue as a as an estimate. So we don't want to lose sight that that's coming back into the equation, starting in FY twenty three. Over a couple of years, we'll step back into that four hundred thousand.
All right, thank you. Thanks, Todd.
Okay, Todd, thank you very much. We appreciate your time.
My pleasure. See you again soon.
Okay, we're gonna, hey, Deb, I'm gonna go to Kate on something, then I'm gonna go back to you because I knew you've been waiting patiently. Okay? Hi, Kate.
Hi, guys.
Old business. Let's go with review and schedule the notice of the right of first refusal for four eighty five Winter Street requirements. So you guys, you know, Kate's got, at some point, we have to make a decision on what we're going to do. What I thought we would do before we get into a long discussion is just to kind of see where, you know, we are as far as, you know, whether or not we want to entertain, you know, you know, purchasing this property. So because if we're not, then I just don't think that we should spend a lot of time on it. And again, I don't know where we got, so I want to go around and see, starting with Mr. Dyer. If there's interest, we can move forward.
I know I was the one initially expressing interest in this, but right at the moment with our fiscal outcome, I don't think it would be adjuvant just for us to move forward with it as we have other projects on the burner as well. If we, if we had agreed to go forward with it, and I don't know if Mr. Clemens had any ideas on it. I know that there was a couple of ideas that he had thrown out initially, whether or not if we could use firework funds for this. But right at the moment, if we can't, then I think we don't have any other money to really use. And I think it's time to move forward, just so that landowner can move forward on their business.
Right, okay, Mr. Higgy.
Yeah, I'll be quick, we can't afford it, I think we should just move on.
Okay, Mr. Boss.
I agree with the former two speakers, thank you.
Okay, and Mrs. Kemper.
I would agree with the former three speakers. However, I do want to remind everybody that this would not be coming out of the general fund. Community preservation had voted that they would support this coming from community preservation. And Todd had also mentioned several meetings back that there was an additional pocket of money that can only, and I want to emphasize that both of these sources of money that I'm speaking of would in no way be able to ever be used to solve our fiscal crisis. They are put in accounts, if you will, that are used for very, very specific purposes. And one of them is for open space, or in specifically, both of these pots of money are to be used for acquisition of open space. And so this would not increase the tax burden, it would not impact, you know, our amount of debt. It would not be taking any money that would otherwise solve our fiscal problems. So I think that we've got an opportunity to preserve this open space and not add to the tax burden, not take away money from, you know, the situation. And I think once open space is taken away, that genie can't be put back into the bottle. And I respect the role that Mr. Clemens and Mr. Skellinger both have. When those two gentlemen come to us and tell us that a piece of property is a key piece of property and that they believe very strongly that it's something that we should entertain purchasing, I'd like to support our volunteers, people, you know, especially somebody like Mr. Clemens, who has put a lifetime of hours into trying to preserve these properties. So, you know, I can live with the fact that I'm an outlier here, but I I do think that it's something we should entertain, given the fact it's not coming from, you know, from our general fund.
Okay, Mr. Boss.
And Mrs. Kemper is right, I know where she's coming from too. But I would say that right now, we have the light control property possibly coming, which Mr. Clemens has also been hard at work on. And just looking at the two different properties, I'd say we have a finite pot, even from the 80,000 Todd mentioned in CPC. And I, for one, if I was given a choice, I'd say I'd be looking at light control rather than the Winter Street property.
Yeah, and and for me, I I think it's just timing, it's timing perception. I hear what you're saying, Laura. Like I said, I I personally don't want to hold up this this landholder, this landowner. And so, you know, today if I'm gonna vote on it, I would be a no.
Yeah, I know Kenny, I I'm not like, you know, I I'm not saying, this isn't my, I'm not gonna die on this hill. This is not, you know, like, I'm just saying, like, I would like to support it. I totally appreciate what Wes is saying. And if I had to choose, and if I were looking at it through that lens, I agree that probably the light control property is the more important. I wish that we had Mr. Clemens here to validate that, but that is my sense. So I I'm good with whatever you guys decide.
And and actually, that light control property, I actually did block that with Vice Chair Dyer. I did not block the Winter Street. So Kate, how should we move forward here? It looks like we're we're not gonna entertain our option for the right of first refusal. So what's the motion, what should we do from here?
Yeah, so normally, pre-COVID, you would just let the time elapse, you know, and and then they would know that you weren't buying it. But here, if you would, I'd like to hear a vote from the board to authorize me to issue a notice of non-exercise to the property owner.
Still moved.
Okay, motion's made and seconded. I think that, whoever seconded, seconded it up.
I'll second it.
Ryan said second, but I thought somebody did mumble second, so.
Yeah, that's why I was asking who. Okay, roll call vote, Matt.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Wes.
Aye.
Laura.
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Okay, Kate, so you'll take care of that. And then next up here on old business, mass housing requests for comments on site approval application for cushion trails. So I want to keep Kate on here, just in case we need her on this. So I don't know if you guys have read the emails. I got an email last week from the Deputy Fire Chief, Robbie O'Brien. John, where are we, John, is it John? Where are we on the cushion trail? Now, I know, I think it was, which department just got the plans? Was that zoning? Somebody just got the plans later.
Yeah, we just copied the plans and got it to the planning board, I think it was yesterday. Was that, is that correct?
Yes.
So we're gonna have, the selectmen are gonna have a meeting next Tuesday. The deadline to get the comments back to mass housing is February 4th. So I think that's a Thursday, and so
Okay, so we
We have another meeting before that.
Okay, so we need more time for we can make any decisions on this, is that what you're saying?
Yes, I mean, we could go through the the comments that people have already made, if you'd like, right now, or we could wait until next week and go through them all, all at once, and make a decision there.
Yeah, what's the board, what do you guys want to do? You want to do it all at once, or Matt has his hand up, go ahead, Matt.
Mr. Chair, just seeing how we have two great minds, Kate and Deb, I think this would be a great opportunity, I'm not sure if they're gonna join us next week. But I think it would be a great opportunity to ask, Laura mentioned this in a conversation between her and I, and I thought it was brilliant, so I want to give all the credit to Laura, is if we're, you know, right now, we have a lot of different projects going on here in the community, and it's going to bring our populations up. What obligations do they trigger if we surpass certain populations? And do you see the current projects, through you, Mr. Chair, hitting those requirements through mass general law?
So can I just clarify a little? For instance, like, if we hit more than 12,000, we need to have a veterans agent. Like, what other triggers are there? Like, like, what other pitfalls for the unwary are there? Because we're a little town, and, you know, there's certain, I've even noticed, like, with procedural things, like town meeting and some of those types of things, they're, all of the sudden, if you're at a certain population level, there are things you can and cannot do, and I just don't know what those are.
And you mean in the context of 40B?
Yeah, so, no, we're not saying 40B. What we're saying is, if we keep getting these 40Bs, so we've already got the Ritter one, we've got the one on Station Street, now we've got this third proposed one. At some, at some point, the population starts increasing as a result of these cluster houses and the, you know, these, these types of projects that are bringing in larger populations, like a single house, you know, would bring in. And we're gonna hit, you know, a larger population in a quicker amount of time than we normally would. What are the pitfalls for the unwary? For instance, if we hit 12,000, now we've got to hire a full-time veterans agent, we're required to do that. What other things like that are there? Do we know, is there, you know, are there kind of like benchmarks?
You know, apart from the veterans agent, I can't really think of hmm, you're, that's a question I I don't think I could give a complete answer for. Because, so, so the other things I'm thinking about that change are the number of alcohol licenses allowed. Maybe that, that helps ease things.
Oh, God.
But on, in terms of population, even the type of government you are, doesn't really, it doesn't trigger something automatically, right? So you can become a city after a certain population threshold, threshold, but you don't have the, there are plenty of big towns out there. I'm trying to think if there's anything other that sticks in my mind. But bear in mind too, once you're accepting these 40B projects, and and perhaps it's even better if you accept a friendly 40B, right? Because you're dictating the terms a little bit more than you do in a regular, traditional 40B, you're gonna eventually hit that safe haven. And I don't know where you're falling in that currently, given the development that's happened recently. And you won't be in the same position as having to accept as many, if if that helps to answer your question. But geez, I can't think of any other statutory, for example, employment positions that are triggered. I'm thinking, what are the other vulnerable populations, council and aging? I don't think that changes.
So Kate, maybe, maybe think about that question and get back to us, because that, that is a good question that, that you guys brought up. Matt, any more questions? Can you think of?
No, not right now.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions for Kate or Deb regarding this? Jim, go ahead, Jim.
Hey, and I'm not sure which one of you guys could answer this, but from what I read, it's 40 units. And that there's gonna be a split between two-bedroom and three-bedroom units totaling 40. And of those units, 10 are gonna be set aside as affordable housing. Am I correct so far?
Yep.
Yes.
And, okay, okay, so I guess this is what I want clarified. Of the 10 that are gonna be supposedly, you know, the affordable housing, what percentage of those is gonna be three bedrooms compared to the overall percentage? I guess my, like, my, my question is, they're saying that 25% of the housing is gonna be set aside. So of that 25% that's being set aside, is any of them gonna be three bedrooms? Because everything I read, it didn't say that. And that, what what I want to make sure, I guess, Kate and Deb is, that they're gonna build so many three bedrooms and so many two bedrooms, but is the percentage gonna be the same, you know, for for the 10 units that they're setting aside? Is my question.
I don't know if we know that from the filings, but I guess I'd like to dig into what your concern is. Because, for example, a lot of folks that I've seen, their concern with 40B was, it's gonna increase our school population, right? This is a problem, but, and and putting aside whether or not we can get into that, because that's a whole nother conversation. But if you have 40 units, and and I forget what the percentages are that you say, some are designated as three, some as two. Clearly, what the split on affordable versus non-affordable doesn't affect the the number of children in the school. It affects whether or not that family needs affordable housing or not, but that that shouldn't be relevant to the consideration. So what, what's the concern with how the split is made up? Is that you're trying to attract young families that that may need affordable housing? Or you want to attract an affordable housing for seniors? Is that what your goal is, or?
Well, I don't really, I don't have a goal in this. What I'm looking for is basically an answer. Because what my fear is, is that they'll say, okay, it's a 25 to split, a 25 to 15 split, and they're gonna make 25 three-bedroom, you know, homes. And that leaves 15 two-bedroom. And of those 15, they're gonna make 10, you know, the affordable ones. Basically, I just, I want a fair fight for everyone. Why does someone, because of what they're gonna build, why does someone that is looking for affordable housing? And I'm not concerned with the school, more kids in town is great. The guy who's got his hand up is part of the problem in this town, with 60% of the people are over 50. I'm also part of the problem. It would be nice to have young families. And basically, what I'm saying is, I want to know the split.
So you essentially want to ensure there's diversity in your affordable housing resources. So I'm attracting both young family and elderly man like Wes.
Yes, perfectly stated.
That's hurtful.
Okay, so I don't think we know from the filings, but we can inquire for sure. And that indicates that that's a preference of ours, that we want to make this affordable housing diverse to attract all types of folks to Hanson.
And that can be a condition of the ZBA, when, when in fact, it's an actual application in front of the ZBA. Right?
All right, great, thank you.
Good, good, Wes.
And Kenny, Mr. Chairman, just on that vein, I'm just looking for information too, because all I, the one thing I picked out of interest was it did say specifically that the affordable housing will have fewer amenities. And I just, I saw that, it's like, I wonder what amenities means? And I, I would love you to have that clarified.
Right, there's no running water in the portable units.
Yeah, well, I knew it couldn't be that, but still.
Right, you want, you want equity across the units to ensure that, you know, they they make them welcoming to the folks that need the affordable housing, just as well, okay?
Yes, you have it.
That's a good question that Mr. Boss just brought up. You know, what amenities, like, are they affordable houses, they're not getting dishwashers? Like, what, you know, what is it? So these are, John, can you, between you and Kate, maybe get them, try to get some answers for us for next week? If you can, I think Deb answered one of the questions.
Yep.
Yeah, so I've got the, I've got the answers, I'll work with Kate on it in order to be ready for next Tuesday's meeting.
Kate, is this something that's appropriate to ask at this stage, before an application's even made?
Well, really, I mean, they, they're not, they're not in fully engineered plans, and they're not worried about the conditions that are gonna be imposed by the ZBA. So this is more to get an idea of what, taking the board's temperature, what's the appetite of the community, what are some major concerns? But I think what we can do, rather than even ask the question of, what do you mean? Do you mean granite countertops versus Formica, or something like that? Rather than get into that detail, I think you say, one of the concerns raised is this, is it the way it was presented in the application? And we want to ensure the following, we want to ensure that the affordable options are diverse to attract various types. And two, we want to ensure that the affordable units aren't, you know, they're living in squalor or something like that, that they're given a reasonable place to live that's welcoming for those groups. So these are concerns that were raised because of the way they submitted the application. I think that's how we can present it. I think that's how we can present it.
Perfect, thank you.
Mr. Campbell, do you have anything to add to this conversation, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I suppose that one of the other things I would add, the great work that had been done previously in regards to the, the Hanson Housing Production Plan, there's a wealth of information that's inside of that. So I would also ask the board to review that HPP that was done previously, because there is quite a good information in regards, in regards to some of the questions that could come forward before any, any 40Bs that come in. So just wanted to throw that in there.
Mr. Campbell, could, for those that may not have the decoder ring, could you describe what a housing production plan is?
The housing production plan was, was an effort for the town to, to, to gather information in regards to what some of the recommendations are going to be in regards to how the town was going to be approaching the 40Bs and affordable housing here in, in the town. So throughout the previous years, there were some public hearings and there was some public input as well as town input in order to develop that housing production plan. It's basically a step in which the town is recognizing and agreeing with the state's need for housing. And it's basically town putting its best foot forward to say that here in the town of Hanson, housing production would happen in this manner. You know, obviously our town is very different from all the surrounding towns, especially when it comes to our land use availability. So that's where it's, it's kind of the town's opinion and atmosphere of how the, the, the town feels and the, the impacts of these kinds of 40B developments could bring on the town. And it's our recommendations moving forward of what would fit in the town.
And that was done after public hearings, all kinds of input from different groups, et cetera, et cetera. So it should be kind of like what our blueprint is for.
Correct.
For like our vision, what our vision is. And I think, I don't know where Kenny, I can't see Kenny, oh, I had, I had had my hand up, may I just?
Yes, sorry, I didn't see your arm.
Yeah, that's okay. That I think is my primary question to both Deb and Kate and slash concern is, I don't want to have our lunch handed to us every time a developer decides they want to do a 40B. I'm all for affordable housing, but I want us to be in the driver's seat and very much involved in the conversation about, as Jim and Wes have alluded to, what it looks like, what it should be like, what, you know, what thick conditions that we'd like to see met? For instance, traffic and water and some green space. I'm just throwing stuff out, you know, I don't, I'm not necessarily saying for any particular project. But I think historically, we have not collectively really been a driver and an active participant. It's been more dictated to us. And I'd really like to see us try to take some control back as a town, as a board, and say, we'll work with you developers, we recognize we don't have enough affordable housing and we'll work with you. But, but we need it, we need these projects to be complementary to the characteristics and the type of town we are. So we're not looking for five-story buildings, we're not looking for, you know, you know, whatever those things are that, you know, just, it needs to be complementary. And we, and we need to make sure that all of the issues that our various boards raise are addressed to the extent that they're reasonable. And I haven't seen anything from anybody that seems unreasonable. They seem, you know, like safety, stormwater management, I mean, these are basic, like, you know, basic kinds of issues that we'd, we'd be commenting on regardless of what type of project it is. So I guess I just ask, and again, this doesn't have to be answered tonight, but, you know, I, I'd really appreciate having a little bit of coaching as far as, you know, what can we ask for? What is our role as a board of selectmen in there, in this? What are the land use boards' role in this? So again, I recognize why 40B is there, recognize that we do need to move the needle on the affordable housing component. That's why we've got the production, you know, the housing production plan and, and we've got a roadmap. So how do we use that roadmap and really try to have a bit more control than we've had historically over this?
Yeah, and Kenny, if I could respond to that, I think that's actually a really good point they have to make. It doesn't have to be 40B, oh, we can't do anything, we just lay down and die. You know what I mean? Because the reality is, with 40B, where towns fall flat is when they just say, no, 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 we don't want 40B. We don't, it, it's not for our town, you know, we are, you know, this, this, I won't, I won't say what, what they might be thinking, but, you know, they, they, they receive it in a really negative way. When you start talking about look and feel and, you know, how, how we're going to lay it out so it's acceptable to the residents who live there, but also the residents around them, you're, you're really well within your rights to say, I want it to look like this. And we, we love the idea of this project, but this piece doesn't work, the three-story doesn't work, cut it down to two. You have to balance that with economic feasibility, but economic feasibility doesn't mean the developer makes as much money as possible out of this one little piece of property. It's, it's whether or not it's a viable project, you know? So you do have quite a bit of discretion to say yes and no to certain aspects of the project. You just can't throw up your hands and say, no, no, no 40Bs here. And the fact that you have this housing plan in place, they can draw from that and you have a good reference point to say, why? What's driving this request? What's driving this condition? So it, Jim Hickey surprises me all the time, I never expect what he's going to say. And so the diversity of housing is a really great point. We want to attract not only seniors to affordable, because there are some communities that say, oh, we love 40B, but it's only for senior housing that we love, you know? And that's pretty transparent. So to say, we want diversity of housing for the affordable units is a really laudable goal. So, you know, it, don't be, I'm, I'm glad you're not, I'm glad the town of Hanson's not afraid of 40Bs, but is saying, we've got some demands too. We want to make it work within our, our framework.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's, I think that's all good stuff. Go ahead, Joe.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, once again, thank you, I appreciate the time. You know, learning just and educating myself here and going, being a member of the planning board and learning this stuff, one of the things that really is kind of sad about 40B, and it's really kind of a well-known fact, and I, I hope that the state at some point may change that, is that you'll get a lot of people that they will hear 40B and they'll hear that it's affordable housing, but that actually the, the rates and the prices that are out there, they're really high. And, and that's really, when I, myself personally coming out of some of the education about that is, is that sometimes the intent for it is really kind of on paper only. So, you know, that's also, I'd like to see that, you know, Selectman Hickey's point about families coming to town, you know, that, that's a really great point. And, and some of the pricing that's up there is, you know, as we know, real estate's really inflated right now, it's, it's really up there and it's, but, but to attract those small families, that would be wonderful, because the, the town really needs that. Thank you, sir. Thank you, everybody.
So kind of, Joey, what you're saying is to apply, you know, they want the 40B aspect to get the project approved, but deep down inside, they just want to get it approved and make the money. But, okay, good. Does anybody else have anything else on this? So John, I would say we should probably cut off the emails as far as questions by like the end of business tomorrow, where we're going to talk about this next Tuesday, just to allow you, you know, a few times, but I think this was a great discussion. Everybody brought something to the table, even Selectman Hickey. So I think that is really good. And I would say if you guys have any questions or anything, get them to the Selectmen's office, say by the end of business tomorrow, to allow John and Bria to, and Kate to research and Deb and whoever else on this. But I think this is a great discussion. Thank you.
And Kenny, before I sign off, I just want to say, for the record, I never, I never meant to say that Jim doesn't add something excellent to the conversation. You know, it just trips me.
It's, it's too late, it's already on the record. Yeah, no. I, I just want to thank Kate and Joe for the, for the nice words. You know, that's, you know, it's good. Hey, listen, and I don't want to get sidetracked, because I know we've got a lot to discuss, but 10 years ago, 12 years ago, Hanson Girl Softball, and Laura can tell you because Hannah played, we had seven in-town teams. We, we, now we have two teams that we split with Whitman.
Wow.
And that's just girls softball. I know lacrosse, soccer, the whole bit, but that's just girls softball. You could talk to Tim Young. We need young families here. My daughter, who, I'm a grandfather, and I don't mind mentioning it, who has an eight-month-old, cannot afford to move to Hanson.
Yeah.
And that my son-in-law and my daughter both work and have great jobs, they can't afford it. But I just want to say thanks to Kate and Joe, and I'm on mute again now.
Right. So with that, I'll sign off.
Kate, thank you very much, Kate.
Thank you, have a great night, guys.
And thank you, Joe, as well.
Bye, Kate.
Okay, next up, new crosswalks discussion with town planner. So Deb, thank you for your patience. And you'd like to take it away, Dave?
Okay, so the state, through the COVID and the CARES Act, they've had, they have a, what's called a shared streets winter program. And it's, you know, it's really was developed to give money to towns that have some streets that they might shut down and put the restaurant in the middle of the street or do temporary restaurant-type stuff out in the street because, you know, because of COVID, you couldn't go in the restaurants and, and things like that. But this last winter round, they extended it a little bit more to allow for, you know, to improve your walkability and pedestrian and maybe shared paths, because so many more people because of COVID are outside and using the trails and whatnot. So after I read the grant, it does allow for improved walkability around the schools. So, you know, we, from Liberty Street up to Indian Head, we have the middle school on one end at Liberty Street and we have Indian Head on the other. And we do have some sidewalks and we're improving the intersection by Dunkin' Donuts at Liberty and County, but we have a couple of crosswalks, we have actually three, and they're, they're not ADA, you know, approved at this point, and they need some repairs and some improvements. So I thought it would be a good idea to apply for a grant to get those crosswalks improved, especially since, I mean, when I'm here at the town hall, on half-days at middle school, the kids do come piling out, they walk up the street, I see them, I see them use the sidewalk, I see them come by the town hall and then they have to, the sidewalk ends, so they have to cross there by in front of Thomas Mill. And then they go up to Indian Head, and when there's ballgames or ballfields, you know, people park at the school and they walk across the street to the ballfields. So I picked those three crosswalks, one, the one in front of middle school, which exists, but it needs to be improved, the one in front of the town hall where it goes from our lower parking lot across towards Thomas Mill, and then one up by Indian Head School, which was really my original focus, because a lot of parents are now dropping kids off there because of the COVID. That crosswalk is, is, is not really what it should be for the safety of pedestrians. So I contacted the, the state, allowed you to work with a consultant for free, the state's paying for them to, to draw up your plans, and you should see in your packet just my, my, my suggestions. Now, this, as part of the grant application, they want to know, have you done some outreach? So last night I had a public, you know, informational meeting, I put it in the paper, we didn't, we, I had just, I had one inquiry by V-mail, you know, by email. But this is just, just to, you know, show you, show the selectmen and make sure that there's something that they want me to continue. The grant is due on Friday, I'm ready to move forward with it. The crosswalk in front of the middle school, the improvements just to that is approximately $18,000 worth of improvements. The crosswalk in front of the town hall, that would run around $49,000 to make it ADA accessible and improve it. And the one in front of Indian Head, which includes a little bit of sidewalk, so also the sidewalk will come out of the parking lot around the corner a little bit and, and to the sidewalk and then go over and that'll be ADA accessible. That also will get us almost to the trailhead there of the town forest, or at least the first trailhead. So I was, I was, I'm excited to have some little bit of sidewalk there. That one's going to have a, like a flashing light put on it, so you would actually get to the crosswalk, push the button and it would, you know, have a beacon, like a yellow flashing light, so that people could cross. It's not a stoplight, it's not, it's not a Massarm like you, like we have down at Liberty, the Liberty and County Road, but at least it, it does provide a lot more protection for pedestrians with a yellow blinking light when they get there. And, and at the planning board meeting last night, we talked about maybe getting a street light out there as, as well, just to have some lights. I'm not sure, I'll have to spend a little more time with it. So that, to make sure that it's even that more, that much more safe. So that's basically it. I'm just trying to make the board aware and get your approval to move forward with the grant application for these three intersections.
Now Deb, would the grant pay for all the cost 100%?
Yeah, I believe so. I mean, you know, these are preliminary conceptual designs, but I did go to Environmental Partners who has done the tip, the engineering on the tip program, you know, McQuan Street. So they have a lot of the information. So I had them review the conceptual designs and they have made comments back and forth to me. I also supplied the conceptual designs to the police chief, the fire chief and the highway director. So they've all weighed in on their opinions with this as well, and they're okay with the latest design that I have. But yeah, I, the engineering may be the only piece of this that is not 100%, but I did read, like, I can squeak some of it in, so I'm waiting for that quote. I, I asked for it, they hadn't gotten it to me. I asked again for it today, I should have it soon. I do have a little bit of money in the planning board budget that was for sidewalk improvements that we may have to re-categorize at town meeting to utilize for some of this engineering. But that's, you know, I'm hoping that we cannot not do that. There are a lot of contingencies and whatnot in this grant that this, that they, that, you know, things that fit changes, because of course this is conceptual and not actual construction documents. So when they prepare actual construction documents, things may come up.
So I think the one on Indian Head in front of the school, that one is like an absolute must. I mean, last week, there was a bunch of cars that were all over in the boat area and they were taking turns going across 58 to pick up their kids, you know? The other thing I'd say is in Halifax, in front of the police station, they have one of those flashing lights that you referred to, and even me driving down, when that flashing light comes on, like, you see it, it like, it wakes you up, you know? So I, I think some, I think personally for me, I think it's a great idea and yes, absolutely. Does anybody else have any more questions or comments?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, I don't see you, Matt, but I hear you, go ahead.
Yep, sorry, my internet connection's too poor for the webcam here.
Oh, okay.
Through you to Deb, is it, I might have missed this one part, Deb, when you said you wanted to add lighting to one of the crosswalks. Is that the one in front of Thomas Mill?
No, I think we were talking, the planning board was suggesting it in front of Indian Head. That is something I'll spend a little more time on and come back in front of the selectmen, because that won't be part of the grant, it would be something that would be National Grid, that would go up on the pole there.
Okay, yeah, no, I think that would be great, just from having personal experience of walking home from town meeting. That sidewalk is very dark and I know when we have events, police and fire usually put a spotlight on that crosswalk. So even if it was flashing orange lights or a light from National Grid, I think that would be great.
Yeah.
Now Deb, do you need a vote by the board or just a consensus?
You know, a vote, a vote would actually be awesome for me, because then I can put it in my grant application that the, you know, that I reviewed the conceptual designs with the board and they have approved for me to move forward in applying for the grant application. They also like to make sure that we're involved, that, you know, I've involved all the boards and that people are involved in these, you know? So it's always just good to see the support behind the grant applications, that, you know, I'm not working in a vacuum here. So, yeah.
So moved.
Second, with gratitude.
Yes, yes, big time. Good work, Deb, thank you.
If there's no more questions, we'll go to a roll call vote. Mr. Diner?
Hi, and Deb, thank you very much for all your hard work. And I would, and send a letter as well from the board of selectmen.
Thank you.
Hi.
Uh, Mr. Boss?
Where is he?
Where is he?
Mrs. Kettler?
Hi.
And Mr. Boss.
Sorry, I just lost internet and just regained it. What are we voting on? Yes to move the debt forward?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And I'm on yes to. Five will agree. Okay. Thanks, Deb, and again, thanks for your patience.
Yep, thank you very much.
Good night, guys. I gotta leave.
Bye, Deb.
Going on on the screen here. Okay, next up, FY22 Budget Information and Dissemination Methods Discussion. So one of my thoughts, and I'm putting this up for discussion, is that we have, we're talking about how we're gonna get the information out about the 2022 budget to the residents. Obviously, we still only have limited information, but over the next, you know, I'd say next month or so, we're gonna have a lot more information. So, you know, we need to come up with what that number, how that number is gonna impact each resident. If the override is to go through, how much would that be? But more importantly, we're gonna have to educate the residents on what services would possibly be cut and what they would be in jeopardy of losing. So what I thought is to have a 2022 forum, like maybe at the high school, where we could have all the department heads come in, have the school come in. We'll be there, you know, maybe accept questions, you know, ahead of time. So we're not, you know, everybody is never seeing questions and figure out some type of forum where, you know, we can, people can come in and ask the questions. Hey, listen, you know, if, you know, if you cut the transfer station, you know, where am I gonna bring my recyclables, you know, or, you know, questions like that? So what I thought is, I have my handy selectmen's calendar. I thought somewhere like March, you know, maybe the 5th or the 16th, somewhere around there. What do you guys have thoughts? Because we've got to figure out a way to get the information out. I'm also willing to go on cable show. I mean, I'm all ears. If anybody has any suggestions or anything that we should be doing, you know, over the next four to six weeks or so, please throw it out there. Let's start with, let's start with Matt, because I can't see you.
Sure. So I think, I think that's a great idea. I don't know if doing mid-March would be better, just so we have more information and a clearer picture of the state budget or anything else that might be into play. I agree with you, Kenny, you know, if we can do a forum of some sort. I think, you know, mid-March, I don't think we're going to be in any better position than we are right now with COVID. So I think that we really need to consider an online venue. And I know that's trickier with a bigger population and not a secure line in the sense of Zoom bombing. But I think, I think that's the way to go, is to go online. I think that would be more accessible for everyone at this moment. And then I forget who it was, but someone mentioned maybe having team up with the Hanson Express to have on the front page Hanson Budget Update, you know? Each week, maybe just an update of what the budget entails so that people are informed that way. And maybe utilize our Facebook account and the town webpage as well of maybe recording this forum and putting it on there as well.
Right, okay. Jim?
Yeah, no, I agree. You know, with COVID-19, it's gonna be pretty tough to get a bunch of people together. But if, you know, questions were submitted and, you know, you were to get on cable access, you know, to answer those questions, you know, that's one way to do it. It would really be tough to limit how many people we could get in the high school gym. And I guess, you know, Ryan might be the guy to ask about, you know, those Zoom bombs where if we were on a, you know, a seven or a 10-second delay, where, you know, like they are on the radio, where there's somebody overseeing the whole thing. It can just press a button and, you know, that person is either muted or on a Zoom situation. You know, it would just be dead air. You know, I think it's great, and we do have to come up with ideas. I think Matt's right on the money with mid-March to give us some time and get some of the budget questions answered instead of placeholders, knowing exactly what it's gonna be. And, you know, we said it when Todd was on, you know, and Todd said it. It's gonna be staff, you know, the services we're talking about is, and Kenny, but, you know, not to say what you said about like, seriously, where am I gonna bring my recyclables? But there may not be staff up there to bring recyclables. And that includes every department, police and fire, you know, and the school system. But without hard numbers, it's a little bit hard to talk about that right now.
So maybe, maybe we look towards April 6th, which would be the first meeting in April. Do you guys think that's too long? Because I do agree we need time. We want to, we want to make sure that we have 99.9% of, you know, the answers in the budget and stuff. I just want to set something up and set up a goal. I'm fine with doing it virtual. I think if we did it virtual, we would have to accept questions before because we can't have 50 people on. It's just not gonna work. So we would have to figure out a way where people could call in questions or submit questions ahead of time.
You can submit questions through chat. On Zoom, I do it all the time at work where, you know, where if you're doing a training, you don't want everybody, you know, people, people just don't mute themselves and it's like the absolute most annoying thing to have 50 million people talking to people, talking to their dogs.
I'm sorry, Laura. Laura, what?
Party har. So, so you can, you can mute everybody except for the speakers and then you can take in questions through chat. So it is still sort of like real-time. So yes, you can ask for questions ahead of time. But I think what you lose there is you might have people sitting in the audience as you're talking and they go, oh, you know what? What he just said makes me ask this question or wonder about such and such. So you lose that if you require all of the questions in advance. So you might be able to do like a combination of ask for people to have questions in advance. So you've got some material to work off and you kind of know what people, you know, where their concerns are. And then during the session, you can take, you know, kind of have, you'd have to assign one person, but have somebody go through and say, hey, Kenny, we've got this question. What's gonna happen at the transfer sta, you know, that type of thing. So you can kind of have a live component too and record it. But I agree with everything that, that all of you guys say, said. I think we really just need to partner, like with the express, you know, with the cable folks. Get it out on Facebook, like train, plane, automobile, whatever it takes to get the info out there. And I do wonder, Kenny, like as much as, I think, you know, it's great that you are offering to do something on it. I also think that it might be helpful for people to hear from our fire chief and our police chief. What is this gonna mean?
Absolutely.
You know, if I have to.
That they would be part of the forum, Laura.
Yeah.
And, you know, so they can explain the impact of a possible impact to their departments or services. Yeah, absolutely. Somebody from the school, you know, all our department heads.
Mr. Stanbrook.
Maybe the beginning of April date would be better and then we can kind of fine-tune and take everybody's ideas and just figure out what's the best way to be able to get it done. Because that's one thing that we're gonna have to do as a board, is get the information out to people and then let the people make their decision at town meeting and May at the ballot, you know?
And do we feel confident about? Do we feel confident, Kenny, about the, about the fact that town meeting is gonna be in May this year? I mean, I really don't want to like call the universe in on us. And I know people will be getting vaccinated and, you know, things will be progressing. But do we feel like a high degree of confidence that that's when we're gonna be having town meeting?
I mean, sitting here at the end of January, I'm not ready to make a decision on canceling something four months away.
No, I'm not suggesting that. I'm just, we might want to ask, like Kate, like for timing, like, like when do we have to pull the trigger type of thing if we're gonna decide to postpone?
Right, yep. That's actually on the list, Laura. Jim, go ahead.
I was only gonna mention where Laura brought it up about town meeting. Wouldn't, and I know Kenny, we're four months away from May, but wouldn't it behoove us to maybe start planning to do it again at the high school in May?
Absolutely.
You know, so that we're not waiting until the end of June and canceling it twice and, you know? Worst-case scenario, let's plan now for it to be outside at the end of May.
Yep.
You know?
And don't forget, we can, we can set those plans now. We can always change it as we start coming and seeing how things are. We can change it, you know?
Right.
I just think that making a decision, again, four or five months, you know, it's like making a decision, what are you gonna have for supper on, on May 2nd? You know, I mean, I know Jim's gonna have Oreos, but you're not gonna make decisions that far. That's just my opinion, you know? But, okay, does anybody else have anything to add? Actually, Mr. Stanbrook. Do you have anything to add to this conversation?
I was just, what I was gonna just say is, what I've been doing, and this might be helpful, is every single time anyone has asked me a question about the budget for fiscal year '22, I've remembered it and wrote it down. So I have a long list of, I guess, would eventually could become FAQs or frequently asked questions, assuming that these questions are probably questions that people would ask if they were, you know, probably a general consensus around these bunches of questions. Now, some of them may not be ones that others would ask, but most of them would be. So what I've been doing is I'm keeping track of that. I've been keeping track of that. I'm gonna be, and I could publish that or put it on the webpage or get it out to everyone. And that could take maybe 80% of the questions that people might have. There's always gonna be the outlier question that no one knows is coming. And, but that doesn't necessarily mean that it's a bad question. But I, you know, the basic ones, you know, why are we here? You know, what does statutory mean? Things like that. Those are questions that we can, I have an answer to, and it could get those questions out and maybe that will work.
Yeah, I actually like that idea and post in it early, you know? So we could still do the forum in April, but if you have questions now, you know, let's get them on Facebook. Let's get them, you know, on the webpage and start answering some of that stuff now. So listen, I think this is gonna require all the tools in the shed and more, you know? So these are all great ideas. So, yeah, that's, I like that one too.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Matt.
I have two, two things. I know I said this, you know, a couple of times before, but I just want to make sure that I reiterate this point. Is in years past, when we always, you know, we're trying to figure out the budget, people just think that we're crying wolf, you know? And then we, somehow it happens, you know? All this hard work that happens behind closed doors with John and Todd and the schools and all the other department heads, they, we all come together and they make sacrifices for each department. You know, so last year, a lot of people didn't realize that the fire department didn't get the apparatus that they wanted or the police department held off on getting cruisers for last year in order to make sure the school budget got to where it needed to be. So I want to make sure that any updates like those, you know, we're keeping track of so we can put them out front so people can read about it going, oh, wow. You know, this department is gonna sacrifice XYZ to make sure that we're getting to the point where we need to be. And then I had one other quick point, and it's just more of a statement. I know that there are employees right now kind of becoming worrisome about their livelihood or where they're gonna get their paycheck, whether or not they're gonna have a job come July. And unfortunately, we don't have a crystal ball to say what's going to happen at town meeting. But I just wanted to acknowledge that we do have employees that are worrying about their, their future. So I just wanted to acknowledge that.
Okay. No, that's, that's a good point. And, yeah, this is, this is tough. This is, this is difficult, but, yeah. So does anybody else have anything else to say on this for right now? You know, the only thing I want to say is, so this, you know, this deficit that we have, it's almost $2 million. You know, that $2 million is, is, it's not to the schools. This is to operate the general fund for, you know, this is for our fiscal '22 budget. The school is a good portion of our budget, but that's not the only portion. So this is the fund, everything across the board. So I just want to get that out. But, you know, whoever's listening and watching, you're gonna be hearing us talk about this every single meeting until it's 80 degrees out there, you know? Because that's what you guys voted us here for. So it's very, very important. We're all taking this very serious and, like you said, we're gonna do the best that we can to educate everyone so everyone can make the best decision that they think is best for them. All right, let's see what's next. So thank you for that. Whitman-Hanson Regional School District D-Regionalization Study and Review of Bids Received. Mr. Stanbrook, if you can lead us into that, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is back on December 22nd, I think it was. I put out a three-quote solicitation for Whitman-Hanson Regional School District D-Regionalization Study. I put it out to 10 vendors that customarily perform this type of service. I got two responses in by the, by the deadline of last Friday. One response was from TMS, or the Management Solution. And they, they have a large packet of what they've submitted. They have, they seem to have met all the requirements of it. And they had a dollar amount of, I'm looking for it here. I'm trying to, trying to see it here. They had a dollar amount of $19,500 in all-in and not to exceed that amount. And we also got a bid from the Abrahams Group from Framingham. And this is their packet. And they also seemed to meet all the requirements of the bid. And they had a, an initial, like a, a, just a listing of the issues under each phase of the scope would be $15,000. They bid in two phases. And then the phase two was $30,000 to $50,000, depending on how many options are to be analyzed. And there are several options that they've come in with this. So there, we do have two bidders. I would like to suggest that perhaps the board take a look at this large packet of information over the next week and then maybe we could take this up again on next week's meeting of which one the board feels that we should go with. Those are only two respondents to the, to the, to the study solicitation.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any questions on that?
Yeah, Mr. Chancellor, you, I guess the question would be to John. You know, where we just received these last Friday and I read them today. I guess my question is more that can we have town council getting in, get involved or at least read these to give us? I, I don't, you know, John, you know, my capacity for learning. I try to learn as much as I can, but reading one was a lot easier than reading the other one. And I don't want to mention their names, but, you know, one was $19,500 and the other was up to $50,000 if, and I don't know if we would just want a legal opinion on this if we, you know, if that's possible. I mean, I, I.
I can, I can certainly run it by Kate and I could take a look at both proposals and just see if they really truly are responsive. I I can, I can certainly run it by uh, Kate and I could take a look at both proposals and just see if they really truly are responsive. Um, I think, I think the I would be, they're uh, certainly could give it to town council to take a look at it.
Okay, I mean, cause I spent some, a good amount of time uh, reviewing these today after talking with you this morning. Um, and uh, yeah, I mean, myself, I could use another week. Um, and just would like to hear Kate's, you know, input on it because this might, you know, for me being the head of that committee, um, obviously, you know, volunteers couldn't get this done. And now we're looking at, you know, between twenty and fifty thousand dollars just to get us an answer on what is gonna be best for the town. I I I I don't mind saying it. I need to be more educated. Um, on on what is the best path for us right now? Um, you know, I don't know how anybody else feels, but you know, since, you know, you guys trusted me to um, to get the ball rolling on this, uh, you know, I definitely could use another week and more help.
Okay, Laura.
Um, yeah, um, I I'm just wondering, uh, John, uh, wh- whether we've done any due diligence and checking references and that type of thing? You know, cause that may end up, you know, cause I mean, to Jim's point, it does seem to be quite a quite a difference um, in the price um, and but at first blush, it appears that the product we would get would be essentially the same. So I'm just what like it, maybe the way for us to cut to the chase is, is there a way for us to talk to the people they worked for before and get an honest assessment of whether they got what it is we're looking for?
Uh, that's absolutely what I, I haven't had a chance to contact everything in the packet, people in the packet yet. So that would also, if we were to push it off for a week, that would give me a chance to get on that this week and contact all the references that they have.
Okay.
Uh, and I'm sorry to interrupt, but I did want to mention, they both had them in there. So i- it's easy accessibility.
Yep.
For any of us to call, including um, town administrators, you know, from, you know, where they did these studies.
Yeah, so I'd say just give John some time to review it. I know I was here today and and I I didn't have time to review it. But I got sick when I saw how thick it was on his death. So, you know, I think give him some time to go through it and work with Kate and get back to us um, on on what you come up with is what I would say, John. Okay, thank you. Next up, executed a benefit waste contract extension to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. So John, you said that was, there was a very modest increase that didn't sound too bad. Was it two point five on this?
It was a two, two point five percent increase uh, per ton for trash. And that'll get us through to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. All the other parts of the contract are the same.
And tell the board what the best part of the contract is. In the future, if we had a problem with them, can we just get out of that contract?
Uh, though there is a a a potential to be able to get out of the contract if we were to move on to another vendor that was more lucrative, yes.
Excellent. Good. So unless anybody has any more questions or looking for a motion to approve this contract, it must be Matt. I can hear a call. Go ahead, Matt.
Um, so I know that we had an issue with these folks prior. I'm just wondering, are we taking any steps to kind of cure, um, not curey, but uh, what what are the, what's the word I'm thinking of? Um, but are we looking out, are we looking at potential, other potential companies to come in?
Uh, the answer is yes.
Okay, so, cause I know we talked about this about a year ago and we kind of put it on the back burner. And there wasn't really any update. Now we're we're looking at, you know, modifying this contract, which is okay for right now, but I just want to make sure that we haven't forgotten about this one issue and maybe it's time to bid it out.
Yeah, and that, and and Matt, that's really a a board health um, thing. But I can tell you through John that they they're all looking at other avenues. Part of the problem is the current equipment that they have. So that's holding them back a little bit. But yes, to answer your question, they are all over that. Any more questions? Okay, so I'm looking for a motion.
So moved. Second.
Okay, roll call. Let's see, who's up first? Matt?
Hi.
Jim?
Hi.
Wes?
Hi.
Laura?
Hi.
And I'm a nine. Okay, next up is authorize the town administrator to sign payroll vendor and withholding warrants on behalf of the board of selectmen through February twenty-eight, twenty twenty-one. So I yeah, we, this is the same, we, it was just so much easier for um, John to be able to sign the warrants and stuff. Um, so, you know, we'll, we'll adjust that quarterly, but right now that'll get us through the end of February. Did I hear a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay. Roll call, Mr. Dyer.
Hi.
Jim?
Hi.
Wes?
Hi.
Laura?
Hi.
And I'm a nine. Okay, next up, we have the town administrator report. Mr. Stanbrook.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, just on some old business, the senior housing McQuan reuse request for proposals deadline. It was extended um, until tomorrow at four P M, but we'll be getting any uh, getting request proposals. Uh, well, the deadline will be then. We have not received any yet. I don't, don't believe, no, we have not. Um, so again, we have until tomorrow at four in order to receive um, things. And that would be to reuse um, the McQuan school for senior housing and um, we've been we're working hard on it, but uh, nothing has happened to so far. Um, as far as new business, uh, the Hanson Town Administrative Special Act requires me to give the board an update on 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 all outstanding legal matters. I have given my monthly update via letter to you, but it will not be a public document. It may contain personnel, union bargaining, or health-related issues that cannot be discussed in up in public session. But I have complied with my requirements under the act. Um, also, the the special act requires me to implement selectmen-controlled town meeting articles and provide written progress reports quarterly to the board on the status of implementation of all prior town meeting votes. I have provided you a list of the, all the outstanding articles uh, in capital projects as of December thirty-first, twenty twenty. Um, just, I'll go over these really quickly. They were in the packet. Um, just for my, for for the way I uh, use terms, I want to make sure that everyone knows what they are. Capital projects to me um, are things that are funded, articles that are funded by debt. Articles are every other type of article that is not funded by debt because there are separate um, the the separate things you can do with debt-funded articles and non-debt-funded articles. So when I'm talking about a capital project, that's a debt-funded article. Um, and when I'm talking about an article, it's um, an article that was funded by anything else other than debt. Um, so just a a quick statistics on where we are as of December thirty-first, twenty twenty. Um, there are eight active capital projects, again, projects funded by debt with a total outstanding of one point three million dollars. I'm gonna be rounding the numbers up. Zero of the eight capital projects were completed in fiscal year twenty twenty-one so far. We have four outstanding town projects and four water relate, water-related projects. Uh, the McQuan school demolition project has one million dollars outstanding and the water meter program project um, has three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Those are the two largest projects outstanding, outstanding. Again, the McQuan school demolition money has been authorized to be spent, but it has not been borrowed and it hasn't been touched yet. Cause we haven't um, decided whether we're gonna demolish the building or not. Um, excuse me, on the article side, two of eighty-four articles, which again, articles are every capital project not funded by debt the the have been completed this year and the total outstanding on all the articles is two million, three hundred and sixty thousand, rounding the numbers off. Um, and again, as Todd spoke about early, Todd has it earlier in the in the uh, meeting. The schools only report periodically to us what they have spent uh, on school-related articles. So they may have spent our article money and they just haven't reported it to us. Um, so we just don't know that yet. So when you're looking at that, just try to keep that in mind when you're looking at the school projects. There were thirty-six town-related articles are outstanding with a balance of about one million dollars. There are twenty-four school-related articles outstanding with a balance of about six hundred and thirty thousand dollars. There are nine uh, Community Preservation Act uh, Committee-related articles. And uh, those are two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, again rounding. Nine water-related articles with three hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars outstanding. Three recreation enterprise-related articles with uh, an outstanding balance of ninety thousand seven hundred and one transfer station-related article with an outball outside, outstanding balance of fifty-five thousand. Um, and again, for this quarterly report, I added a third page that lists the capital projects and articles by authorization, authorization vote date. And it also lists the original amount of the authoriz- authorization and the amount that's remaining as of twelve thirty-one. And I go, again, on that other page, there's initial cursory review of me, of mine of what type of procurement the project or article would have needed uh, based on the amount and type of project. Again, I haven't gone deeply through into it, but if it says vehicle, sixty thousand dollars, that's a chapter thirty-B project and that's an invitation for bid. Um, that's the type of thing that would happen. Now, I'm, when I actually get to the wording of the articles, which will probably be be on the next uh, quarterly update, um, they may have been something that I didn't see, but I'm just, you know, to looking at articles on the uh, just on the surface. That's what they, uh, the way they should have been procured properly. Um, at future meetings, I'd like to go over the selectmen-controlled articles and discuss a plan for each one of them going forward if we can. Maybe we just do one at a time. I know it's getting late. I don't, we don't want to do uh, send, say here till midnight, but uh, some night. But um, for each one of these articles, um, the choices would be to number one, either leave the money there in the article and actually do the project as town meeting voted with the available funds that are left in the project. Um, another option would be to add money to the article so you can do the projects as town meeting uh, wanted them done and voted it to have done. Um, and if the article is completed, you would need to notify the town accountant, Todd has it, that the project is completed. The funds are no longer needed. And then that, those funds uh, could be then transferred to some new project at town meeting. And then finally, if the article's completed and then the um, the 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 project's done, everything's done, notify Todd again. And then uh, Todd can then close that project and return the funds back to um, the unreserved fund balance of whatever fund it would be. If it was the general fund, it would be free cash. Um, if it was the water fund, it would be the fund balance that that water, water fund has. Again, the community preservation fund, it would be the current community preservation fund balance. And uh, recreation, the solid waste would be enterprise fund retained. So um, capital projects again, uh, have special restrictions. But leftover balances can can be repurposed or you can pay down debt. So there are other things you can do with with debt money, but they are restricted more than just a regular article. Um, so and why am I bringing this up? Uh, number one, it's, I'm required to give you an update and I want to be as thorough as possible. That's why I'm doing it. And the second reason is fiscal year twenty-two will be a challenging year, as you heard earlier. Um, repurposing unneeded funds is one way that we could fund capital projects that need to get done. But the, and and but not have to use free cash that from this year or and um, some other fund that we may need uh, in order to stave off layoffs or other uh, other cuts. So um, that's just my update on that and uh, with uh, and then there'll be a little bit more coming on March thirty-first of the next quarter. Um, and then finally, I I received a letter from the South Shore Voc Tech. And.
Yep, South Shore Voc Tech.
Sure, Voc Tech. I wanted to say that properly. Um, and I just.
You must run over there too, John, by the way.
Um, it just, I I I didn't know that. I need to get over there and try that.
You have to get over there.
Uh, and then just there with South Shore Voc Tech sent me a letter uh, back on uh, January sixth. Uh, they are going to be uh, asking for a, an article to be placed on town meeting to do some uh, uh, some, some borrowing, a death off death, debt authorization amount in the area of seventeen or eighteen million. Again, we're only partially responsible for that because we're only partially part of the, about the, of the vocational district. Um, but they have wording that that they're going to be fleshing out, um, that they want, will want to be placed on our warrant. Um, whenever we do have our town meeting to allow South, South Shore Regional Voc Tech School District um, to borrow money to remodel their building footprint and uh, and borrow uh, for other reasons. So uh, that's going to be coming and I just wanted to get that out that they had sent that letter as a correspondence. Um, and that's it. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank God that is twenty twenty-three. So I think that's it. So looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Jim, second by Matt. Roll call, Jim?
Hi.
Matt?
Hi, thank you.
Wes?
Hi.
Laura?
Hi.
And I'm a nine. Hey, thanks. We, we guys, we coming a lot tonight. Thank you very much.